It is Thursday, October 26th, 6:31 PM. And I am calling the Board of Commissioners of the North Hootby Park and Recreation District. All Commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Shingleton. Okay, agenda changes. Commissioner Frost, do you have any agenda changes?
Um...
No.
Commissioner Hofmeyer?
No.
Okay. Public comments?
No one's signed up.
Okay, no public comments. Board issues? Commissioner Frost?
Uh, no board issues. I'm just gonna go over committee reports for the board.
Okay, yes, then that's exactly where to go over. Commissioner Fort?
None.
Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Yeah, I have an agenda item that I would like to add into the next meeting.
Okay.
And, you know, there's been some talk about dialect amongst the board, behavior, et cetera. And none of us claim to be innocent. You know what, I was thinking outside of the box, I'm like, you know, maybe there are some ways we could beat that. So an idea I had was, and this is what I'd like to have added for the next meeting for discussion, it would be a resolution establishing a program for youth representation on the park's board, and establishing criteria for selection of the youth representative. So I'd like to have that on the next meeting. There are a lot of benefits that we'll discuss when it's on there, but what made me think of it was, I don't, I don't, I don't, I think that all of our behavior may have been a little better if there was a child present at the table. And like I said, we'll discuss it for the next meeting.
So, resolution for youth participation on board?
Yes.
Is that enough?
It's a bonus, yes.
Okay. All right, I have a prepared statement to read. "I regret that any actions I took could be construed as purposeful negation of the Open Public Meetings Act. I am a big fan of the purpose of the law, and I think we have been over backward to ensure that we do follow that law over the past three years. I agree that the vast majority of our discussions must take place in full light of the public's eye. My mistake was that I should have informed the Commissioner involved that he would be the subject of the meeting, and given him a choice of being in public or in executive session. In my defense, this was the first time it was necessary to discuss the offense of disrupting a meeting with a fellow Commissioner. I had never seen this level of bad behavior by a Commissioner, and was not sure how best to handle it. I did know it had to be handled, and by me, since I had the unfortunate responsibility of being the chairman. Initially, I thought to do it in public, since the offense was very public, but then, with time to reflect, I remembered a lesson learned as a junior officer in the Navy: you praise in public and criticize in private. The intention for doing anything was to do as much as possible to ensure it was never repeated. Disruption of public meetings is never okay; it is in fact a criminal offense. The attempt to intimidate other members of the board into abandoning their beliefs through name-calling, abuse, and physical dominance is unacceptable. It was never about trying to change his beliefs or how he votes; I just needed him to not disrupt the meeting again, to the point we had to call the police in order to conduct the district's business. So I had to make sure it did not happen again, but I also sought to save the Commissioner from public embarrassment. My bad, I won't make that mistake again. I did make a mistake, not the first, not the last. I'm not perfect, I'm not a politician or a parliamentarian. It was not a secret meeting, it was an executive session which was declared in advance, along with the stated RCW that allows it. We've been calling executive sessions in that manner for years, and nobody has complained. Again, the error was in not advising the Commissioner that he was the subject in advance, and to offer him the option of having it in public. The other part I admit I was wrong about was that the rest of the board cannot in fact vote an elected official off the board. I looked at the bylaws, which say we operate under Robert's rules, and those allow for expulsion for continued bad behavior. The US Senate can expel its members, it's in the Constitution. I have to admit, it did not occur to me that the state of Washington would not allow expulsion of board members who could not behave themselves. Again, my bad. I repeat, I'm not a professional politician or a parliamentarian. My goal has always been to serve the community to the best of my ability. So apparently, a Commissioner is allowed to be as rude and obstreperous and antithetical to the democratic process as he chooses, and the rest of the board just has to live with it. Well, I spent thirty years as an naval officer dealing with mature, responsible, intelligent eighteen-year-olds. I do not know, nor do I care to learn, how to deal with spoiled, tantrum-trolling three-year-olds. I'm done, I will not do it anymore. I've been the chair for over a year, and I will not continue to do a job which does not have the authority to properly maintain order and preserve the democratic process from those who would do it harm. I'm keeping my seat as Commissioner, but I hereby resign as Chairman of the Board effective at the end of this meeting." So, I also want to add to the agenda under new business, we will elect a new chair. All right.
May I add something real quick?
No, you can't. Thank you.
Very well written, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, approval of minutes. So, did everyone get a chance to read Commissioner Fort's minutes? We sent it out very last minute, so if you didn't, just do it next time.
I wasn't able to read them.
Okay, we'll just, we'll save it then. Do that next time. But I will say, Commissioner Frost, you have four sets of minutes, you are left. Commissioner Shingleton has two, Commissioner Hofmeyer, you have two, and I have one. We need to get these done. All right, voucher review, do I have a motion on voucher review?
Yes.
And it is?
I move that we approve of expense voucher 7731-7764 for $53,662.69. And payroll in the amount of $44,407.42 for a total of $98,070.11.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the expense vouchers 7731 through 7764 in the amount of $53,662.69, payroll transfer of $44,407.42 for a total of $98,070.11. Discussion. So whoever has questions, just start if you get to them. Go ahead.
Well, I had a question on numbers 7732 and 7733 up at the top of the voucher report.
Ooh, I can't.
In-house payroll did not clock in, correct? What happened there?
It went, um...
So it cost us a hundred, or it cost us ninety-six dollars?
Did not talk in the right department.
So why is that cost us? I'm not quite sure. Seems like it was the clock that failed.
I'm sorry?
Was it the time clock that failed?
No, she didn't department transfer into the correct department. So she got paid less instead of giving it.
So this is the correction? Okay, thank you. And the direct deposit did not go through, $190?
Well, yeah, because of the account loss. I don't know, well, whether the employee knew or not, the direct deposit went there, and then it comes back to us, and so then we cut a check. So we don't have to have a paycheck.
That was just a correction also, not a real deficit, okay.
That's great.
No further questions.
The kayak equipment, what equipment did we buy? I know we had talked about if the life preservers were really, really bad.
Yeah, that's probably what the bull, that's from the NRS, so yeah, that's probably that, the stuff from, I don't know exactly what those things are, but it's the stuff that was on that list, that approved list, I mean, we showed you, life vests and I think a couple of skirts for the kayaks that were in the program.
And do we have kayak groups scheduled?
Pete has done, we've arrived at one recently, but the next, we just finished up this past month with the college.
Oh, okay, so they did, yeah, it seemed like when we talked that there was nothing scheduled, so.
Yeah, I was against on one class in the summer, but we did, we did four classes that are scheduled this year.
Okay. What's a Cobra letter from Renn and Associates?
Whenever someone, in this case is Coach, when Coach was, when his employment was terminated, he, we're required by law to, our insurance provider provides him a letter for this Cobra, which is his ability to get the same level of coverage, although it costs a whole bunch more, we have to provide him with a letter.
Oh, okay.
And that's just the fee for providing.
It wasn't much, I just didn't know what it was.
Saying he had, previous health insurance, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. As on the P and L, so whatever, the running club dues, we still show that as ninety-five dollars, and it's like, I'm sure we refunded it, right? But I couldn't find where that was refunded.
If that was, if it was refunded, it would come out, it would be on the refund.
Where is, where is the refund in the, in the budget, or?
I'll find it, I'll find it.
Give us a number of pages.
It's, if you go down the intergovernmental, almost near the bottom.
Page, page what?
It's on page, uh...
Five.
Five, okay.
Yeah, page five.
Uh-huh.
Up under intergovernmental, right under government services.
Oh, refunds, there it is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, one of the things we're gonna propose when we give the budget for next year to the Commission is refunds will come out of the line item that they were actually came from, instead of a number of refunds. So we'll look more accurate about.
Just so you can see it easier.
Yeah, so you see that we've put ten thousand in for something, like some course, but we gave two hundred back, so then it'll say nine thousand eight hundred.
That's good.
Okay, thank you. And Shane, did you have anything?
I did.
All right. Oh, forgot. So, it was moved and seconded that we approved the expense vouchers 7731 through 7764 in the amount of $53,662.69, and moved into the payroll account of $44,407.42 for a total of $98,070.11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye unanimously approved.
Quick question though on this. You know, I brought this up before. We're kind of approving something half of the fact, and I thought we were gonna look at it.
I did look into it, let me explain.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll use it, we'll do it right here. Okay, I called the, Sheila Kreider, lovely woman, and the answer is, we absolutely do not have to approve something. The problem is that the money has already been authorized by us, or spent by us, but we are authorizing the county to make our payments for us. So if it is something that has been put onto one of our credit cards, for instance, and we then refuse to let county pay it, that means we will be in default and we'll end up, so, so the answer is, no, we can't.
So, yeah, see, my thing is, I don't wanna, I understand you can't, it's already spent and you can't get it back.
Yes.
But my point is that we can't approve something that we never had any say in in the first place. All we're doing is reviewing, and why can't we just say, we, we reviewed?
Well, we are approving it, because the county has not released that money to pay those bills.
We just, we reviewed it.
Yeah, you can, what you can, and what I recommend you do is if there are expenses that you don't...
That's what I thought that guy told us when he came here from.
If there are expenses that you do not approve of, then you just make sure you mark them and remember, so that you can bring it up at the Executive Director's performance evaluation, or whatever.
So, so the line down here, as of this date, the board by whatever unanimous majority votes, does approve review of those vouchers, it does.
Okay, thank you, that's, I like that much better, because that's really what we're doing.
Okay, maybe I should, I should say it correctly now, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, anyway, that's...
That's exactly what we're doing, yes.
Yes, we are.
We're not, you have to prove something before, not after.
We're approving the review of this.
That's what he just said, and so it's been corrected, thank you.
So, it is important that we do look at it, make sure that, you know, tickets to Cuba are not being...
I don't disagree with that.
Anyway, all right, Clover Valley Committee.
Yes, I'd like to put out a public comment, or a comment for everybody that volunteers at the park, helping clean up and making sure all the dogs remain safe and report any incidents. However, I would like to make a motion to make Clover Valley Off Leash Dog Park and the Clover Valley Baseball Field smoke-free, and have a designated smoking area in each of those, of each of those locations, like Otica Side, where no reason to be bothered by somebody else.
Do you have that written down?
I do not, but I will...
You probably wanna, do you want us to think about it, or do you want us to vote on it tonight?
Vote on it.
Okay, so, right out of, I think what it is, what the motion is today, and it's probably less is better, but you also need to be explicit enough.
Okay. I make a motion to make Clover Valley Off Leash Dog Park and Baseball Field smoke-free inside the park, minus a small smoking area between the two.
Okay.
I will look.
We're gonna talk about it, but first, so, the motion is to make Clover Valley Off Leash Dog Park and the ball field smoke-free, minus a small, oops, I said parking, smoking area between the two. Do I have a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded, so, do you want to say anything further on it?
Um, well, the plan is to have a, either one area of a smoking area in between the two films, so it's far enough away from both the ball field and the dog area. That could be set off to the side, on the side of the road, or in one of those, I'll go, is probably remnants to the, where the chain goes. We could put a bench here, one of the wood benches that we have left available, and possibly, if we can, we could get one of those little smoke cans, purchase one of those smoke cans, so people throw their butts away properly, instead of just throwing them to the ground.
Do you want to talk about why this is a good idea?
This is a good idea for, for the dog park, is because people throw their sugar butts on the ground, and it's very poisonous for the dogs. If you actually see the new law that came on in Washington, that says that, I'm not sure this is around kids, but if you have, I know if you drive with a kid that's under eighteen years old, you cannot smoke in the car. So that, I know that new law came out, and I don't know if that also constitutes smoking around the kid, under the age of eighteen. This is to protect both the public and the animals from secondhand smoking.
To address the policy that's only in the park.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Okay, are you done?
I am.
Okay.
I'm very supportive of Commissioner Frost's motion, however, I like to follow the regular process as well. Not that it's been read, I would, I would vote for it at the next meeting, but as far as tonight, I would abstain probably.
Why?
Just that I would like to see it on the agenda and have the public comment. I know this is something that the public, it's something they're probably not gonna comment on, but I just, it's just the process, you know?
Does anyone on this board smoke, or just ask them, what you want? You're right, so why don't we, do you mind if we table this, the vote on it?
No, table it next week.
And so that we can have the public will have a chance to weigh in?
So any further questions until we, until I can...
Well, no, 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 let's, let's talk about it tonight, and then we'll just have, we have the motion, and we can vote on next, so what else?
So signs, would you have a sign, sort of in the non-smoking, designated it, or?
We have to, yes. I already got the signs, and I can get some more signs made up from FRC, because they have a machine that makes, uh, stands a little...
Butt cans, I assume it's gonna be a small butt can, so maybe we should have a picnic table there, put the butt can on.
I'll have to figure, we'll have to talk and figure out what we do, we have to get a, we have to get a, we have to get a fork, if we want a...
We got the, the...
Oh, you still have a weight one? Oh, actually, we love all those. So then it's just looking into what the cost for a small butt can.
Yeah, yeah.
They're like twenty, twenty bucks.
Give me your coffee can, that's what you should do.
Folgers.
Not plus, but, um, yeah, those butt cans are like twenty bucks for a decent one that can fill up a lot.
If we're gonna do it then, and we're providing a place, then, we haven't extended anything against Clover Valley this year anyway, so, other than the lawn line and stuff.
Yes.
Okay, so any, any further discussion before we go on to the next topic?
Probably a good idea to get, let the public have some input, because there's some hostile smokers out there.
Yeah, so...
What I plan on doing is putting notification on those billboards out there, saying, hey, if you want to have a go for smoking inside the park, come to the next meeting, and I'll put a date and time on there, and...
They don't get a vote, they have a, they can have a say.
A say in it, not a go, a say in there, saying, hey, come, what's your opinion?
Or send a, send a letter to your Commissioners. They can do that too, they can just send us an email, say, you know, whatever.
I'll definitely put that out both the parks.
So we have to sign out of parks, saying what we're going to do?
It's gonna give them a heads up.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, we're gonna put something out there, saying what we're planning to do.
We're planning on voting a non-smoking...
That's a good idea, right?
So they have some idea of what's going on.
Thank you.
That's a good idea.
I'll let the baseball people know as well, I'm young and, uh, more than a little grown-up.
So instead of tabled, I'm just gonna put on here introduced, no smoking policy, or something like that.
So, yeah, but the motion itself is tabled, I think that's the correct terminology. So, because it was made and it was seconded, but we, we're not voting until next meeting. Okay. Nothing from the Program Review Committee, action item review.
We have one, still, one outstanding here. The question was from Commissioner Fort at the last regular meeting. Is there a plan for the city to run water sewer in the Hillcrest area? So, no, the answer to that is, I spoke with the city, they, the only way that would happen is if those people out there petitioned the annex. And if they did that, and it was approved, then they would get some nominal, probably like five-year period, but at their own cost, each individual property owner's own cost, between five and fifteen thousand, whatever it costs, would be hooked up to the water.
Okay.
That's the answer to that.
That failed the test, didn't it?
The first test, yeah.
Yeah, it is one, we haven't done one, and I wouldn't start one now with the rainy season here, but we could do something like next August timeframe and see, you know, after it's had a dry spell around, and see if it does it. I'll build that into the budget, and then in the discussion I want to do the budget for me.
Okay, unfinished business, BHBC contract. Okay, so another thing I was wrong about, apparently, expensing is different than spending division, division, district resources, so the contract as signed is valid. Does anyone have any questions?
I think no further comment to be asked.
All right, modified operations discussion.
That's a big one. So I hope everyone had a chance to look at this. It was a, that's a very voluminous volume of stuff, but I'll go through, I won't go through and read everything here, I'll just hit this highlights up, show you what I, what I did, and how I approached it. So, I looked at a lot of scenarios in there, how can we do something to make the, make the pool, the aquatics part of the stuff, still run at some capacity? And so, I narrated down to three, that, again, you already know the outcome, if you read, you already know what I think of the outcomes, but when I narrowed it down, those were the ones that I thought might have a chance in there. So, I did three scenarios. One was the weekend schedule, I thought, okay, well, why don't we just try something short, we were open on weekends, and do something like that. And what that would allow us to do is let the high school and the swim team, the booster club swim team with BHBC swim during the week, we could have the temperature down around seventy-seven or so, save cost on the boiler, bring it back up in time for swim lessons on Saturday, Sunday. It's a good, I think it was a, it was a good notion, and, but what I gave you were three notional looks at it, three different budget looks at it in there. And while one of them showed a profit, that profit is based on getting a hundred percent patronage at those extreme prices that we have to charge, based on, at least the way that I, the assumptions I made on how to approach lane cost per hour. And I even lowered it lower than actual number was, just to make it an even number and try something in there. And part of what I did was, I took out seventy-five percent of the finance director, maintenance director in mine, and only twenty-five percent of our salary, since it was only gonna be a three-months run anyway. So I tried to just do it that way, pull out seventy-five percent of ours, see if that lowered the bar some on the lane cost per hour, knowing that we're going in with some residual levy money in our MNO account going into the year. So that was the basis for how I came up to it. Like everything I do, I round and I go twenty percent on it, with labor and with pool, but for this right here, I'd even do that, for the lane cost per hour, I did on the labor stuff, I'd even do that on this one here. And based on that, I came out to about a hundred dollars an hour, well, that was my arbitrary number that I put in there for it. And so then I put a list of what revenue and expense projections we're being there, and it does not include the use of the reserve at all in any of these calculations. So, when you look at it, I don't see a way with the weekend operating schedule to be financially viable for us to do, I just don't see how we, how we make this work there. In fact, I ran and wanted fifty percent using the same rates, but what if only half the people came, that we need to have, the minimum we need to have. Now, you see, that number there was pretty ugly, wouldn't even be covered by the reserve. Then the next one, I did twenty-five percent. I don't believe we'll get more than ten or fifteen percent at the very best of the rates that I have in there, I just don't see how people are gonna come and pay sixteen, seventeen dollars to go lap someone for an hour.
Not when you have to share with five other people.
Exactly, so, so, right away, I, that one, I just, I just don't think that there's any way to do that. So I looked at the next one, I looked at two other scenarios, all of these have kayak, and so I'll just say this upfront, kayak can probably still go, because they were, they can put wet suit on, all I have to do prior to it, which we plan to do, if this comes to a thing where we shut the aquatics down, the plan that the maintenance director and I have is, about every ten days to two weeks, we're gonna run the pump for twenty-four hours to cycle the water and let the chlorine go through there, so we keep the water clean. And, but other than that, it'll be turned off, and we can do that before kayak class, leave the, leave the temperature be down around seventy-three, seventy-four, but that's warmer than they're gonna have when they go out into the bay, or have it, so, they could, that could probably still go, and so I have that sort of factored into it. But even, that, that's really, I'll cut to the chase, that's really the only option that you could even almost do, and you could do that whether you closed aquatics or tried to do it, but I think, when you look at it, even that last option, which is kayak only, we're still not hit, we're still not hitting the number we need to hit, we're, and if we keep the reserve in the reserve, even if we brought that over, it's about break even. And that's really not good enough either, because we need to have some on-hand operating cash to be able to start up a slow ramp up. If this fails, and then it passes again in a year, we still have to have cash to get us through a slow ramp up, until we get the big distribution from the levy, which would be like the April May timeframe. So, the bottom line to me is, give them the assumptions I use, and if someone has different assumptions they'd like me to work with, I'd more than gladly take a look at it. The only option that I see is that we let the kayak people come in and do their thing when they want to do their thing, that's it. That's relatively low cost, turn the pump on, they come in for a couple hour, three hours one day, and then I think they might be in for an hour the next day, and then they're gone, then they're gone out to the bay, and they're in the water.
Have you considered just open swim during the summer?
Well, if that's the only thing we do, then they have to cover all the costs they're gonna do. In that, with, based on, how do I recover the stuff, the levy, the cost, the operating cost, there's the word. Now, that doesn't mean that during that time, which is another part of the discussion I'm coming to, there might not be friends in the district stood up that might be able to, and I've talked to about six people in the last three weeks about this, and they all like it. None of them are really ready to jump onto it, and, yet, but I'm gonna keep working that with a couple other people. That might be a way, Commissioner, to do that, is if we get to that point, what can we do to get some external funding through stuff, that might be able to say, and we run the numbers, okay, that's gonna cost this to do this, then we take a look at it. So, it would be a down-the-road type of thing. And in the summer, open swim is, is a honey maker, but, yes.
So, yeah, so I have a couple things. So there'd be no other staffing required for the kayak, no CSS or lifeguard?
No, he's lifeguarding, he's a lifeguard.
So he would, he would check them in, and he would do the lifeguard, okay, so no further. Okay, and then... And then, uh, when the pool was, you had a sort of little outline for Nwac having two lanes, and Oaktober High School having three lanes, and one lane not being used, could that be used for like, uh, PRT, or rented out to PRT, or something like that?
If I brought a lifeguard in.
Oh, so those, okay.
What you see, most of those are in, for that.
So there's no extra staff for that either, okay, all right, nevermind.
So, I mean, it's not a good picture if the levy fails for, for aquatics, but as you saw in there, we have been talking, uh, for many months now about growing into the, the non-aquatic stuff. Some of the ideas that we've been throwing around are in here in the packet I gave you. I mean, those could run, but even, even, even if the levy fails, those aren't gonna be, at least not initially, they're not gonna, they're not gonna move the bar that much. But over a couple of year period, I think those would grow into something that people, okay, that we're doing this, more like a, a rec center would do in a normal, in a normal city, they'd be doing some activities, yes?
Chair?
Go ahead.
I, I, I've read through this ten times. I, I, I think I have a motion. I may be jumping the gun, maybe I'm not, maybe I am, but maybe we come back to this, um, but, but I have a motion.
Okay.
My motion is if the levy fails, beginning November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, under our executive director, a complete aquatic suspension will commence.
Are you required to say that again?
Yes, if the levy fails, not what any of us signed up for here, by the way. If levy fails, beginning November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, under our executive director, a complete aquatic suspension will commence.
What?
And I think, exactly.
That means that everything except
And I think there would be There would be something
How about, how about?
Is that there, the also-don't swim?
I would get, if I get through that week of the election, then the girls' special swim team, they're off to sea that weekend.
Oh.
It just would be no boys' swim team and
Okay.
no next-year swim team.
So I second for discussion.
Is, is that going to be with also the MWR?
No.
Well, I have a question about kayak, what about the kayak, can the kayak continue or not?
Wait, 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 okay, so the motion was, it's been moved and seconded that if the levy fails, starting November thirteenth to fourteenth?
November thirteenth.
November thirteenth, all aquatic activity at this pool will cease.
I, I, well, what I said, if levy fails, beginning November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, under our executive director, a complete aquatic suspension will commence. And I think he has, within his job title, within his contract, I think he has some leeway to, to start to act that and come back to us at the December meeting and maybe tell us a little more of what that looks like, I suppose.
So he could come back and say he wants to continue with the kayak?
I would, I would have to, the budget would be a whole different budget at that point, so that, any discussion would come there. Want the budget getting passed is one thing, but then as we go through the year, then, yes, in, in my role, as we look at stuff, yeah, we can probably look at whether or not we can, outside of the non-aquatic things we wanna do, can we do something now and then, what does that look like, is it for a week, is it for, you know, I don't know. Those are all the things that we would look at.
I mean, we're not changing the bylaws or anything, so a simple majority can change it at any point.
I see with the exception of, uh, having an executive director, having certain exceptions like kayak and something like that, with, with exceptions.
I think we're leaving that to him to bring back to us at the December meeting, I think.
Tell me again, that it's a, a complete aquatic suspension, did you say under the direction of the executive director, will commence?
Yes.
And by that you mean he can, he can make changes?
Mm-hmm.
If I can, what I would do is I would come to the commissioner, what my proposal would be for commission of approval. Even if, and if it isn't an approval, at least it's, here's what I'm doing so that there's some, someone else looking at it.
And a cost. Add a cost.
Right.
Further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that if the levy fails, on November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, there will be a complete aquatic suspension under the direction of the executive director, will commence. All those favors signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes no, passes. Okay.
Can we go to five minutes rest?
Yes.
We used to have a clock in here, didn't we?
No, it's, you see it through there.
Oh, that's where it's set off, right?
It's five past seven.
I know, you can see the clock somewhere. See, I know the ladies complained about not having a clock in their bathroom, we don't ever have one in the men's bathroom.
Yeah, everyone in the bathroom.
Last time, a couple times ago, somebody complained.
Well, ask the question.
No, I don't want to talk to you.
No, I don't care. You don't have to listen if you don't want to. It had to do with layoff procedure for the pool, that's what this is about. Just kinda wondered if you guys were gonna address that, that's all I know.
Yeah, that's a good question, but, um, that's what the executive director has got also.
Thank you very much, man, appreciate it.
Is that what, is that the right answer, or is it something actually right?
You know, you can be a little bit.
I'm not trying to be a bit.
Actually, you really were, you understood it like that, I really would have. Everybody here knows that, you don't have to talk like that to me. You didn't have to talk to him like that, but then again, you really do, because you think he was still the captain, it was captain's mask, I guess, when you called him, then it wasn't.
No.
That's kinda what it was.
No, it wasn't, I was trying to get him to stop doing criminal activity.
I don't have to listen to you. I don't know, but you think you were to say that to me, everybody heard you when you said that to me.
We took a five
Everybody heard you too.
We took a five-minute break and I forgot to turn the recorder off.
I just wanna call the cops on you.
We're at break, so you're fine.
I know, I know my rights.
Stop. Okay, we took a five-minute plus break, and we are, um, calling back into order at seven twelve PM. So, did we have, do we wanna talk about the, more about the modified operations, so are you good with that?
I'm good with what you said, it's a completely only thing to do, rhythm, all of it.
Okay. The fee structure discussion.
So in the, in the packet, I, I gave a, a sheet to y'all, or it's actually three pages, it should be at the back of the packet I gave you.
That's several, it's, I think it's several pages.
Well, yes, it's three, three pages. Probably your period back, probably the last three pages on the line, anyway. So what we have in there is an activity for which a fee would be, and then the next column is the current price, so both left to right. They're labeled, so I don't need that either. And then a recommended price for phase in in two thousand and eighteen, that's assuming the levy passes. And then there's a levy fail, which sort of we just obfuscated by what we, um, did, but those are the pri, I'd keep those around in case something comes up down the road. So, if you want me to do a generic overview of it, I'm, I'm glad to do that. I know people look at, you want me to just do a, do a generic overview of what, of what this is?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so, um, so, oh, I, I put, those columns that I just told you about, and then there's some notes that are justifications and everything. And, um, all, so just so everyone knows, all, there's nothing in here that talks about a credit card fee, which is gonna be part of this discussion, anyway. But, um, so these are prices without any credit card uplift, or if that's the way we go. And, and all of the out-of-district is, is a ten percent uplift and rounded. Everything that's out-of-district is gonna be that way.
Rounded to the nearest dollar?
Yes.
Not up, okay, thank you.
Yes, rounded to the nearest. So, children, uh, what we're proposing in here, so right now, children are in there from age one to four, we think it should be one to six. The reason, one of the reasons for that is, you'd have to be seven years old to go into this big pool, anyway, by yourself, without a parent. Even if, even if you're a, a great swimmer, you can't go in there without, you wanna write on that, that just?
Just in my yard, we have to take that girl out, she's just on the side.
Okay. So that, that's, that's one of the things we put in there, and so that whenever you see children one to four in the notes, it actually would become children one to six, and then out of the, the out-of-district number there.
Does anyone have a, have a problem with that, is that okay?
Yeah, sounds fine to me.
Okay.
Okay.
I see ya.
Okay, so on lap swim, open swim, I've got, uh, you can see the, uh, rate increases for those right there, the in-district, out-of-district, and all that. My, my proposal, though, is, as we talked about last time, I could, we could start that in December, but MWR will follow for ten months. So, I, I would say, let's not, that gives me the time to go in February, go over and talk with them, give them what we're gonna do, so they build that into their twenty-FY-nineteen budget, and then they'll figure out how much they're gonna cover and not cover, but at least it'll be, it'll be in the contract officially. Then, uh, punch card, so anything on the, oh, I can stop at least a minute, so anything on?
I had a problem with the out-of-district, I think they should make a higher, there should be a higher differentiation. I, I just think it should be, because, um, I pay sixty-eight dollars a year in taxes to support this facility, and so if I come swimming twice, then I would have to pay six plus thirty dollars, that's how much my swim would cost.
Okay.
It just, but I don't know if everyone else agrees with me, so that's what I think.
So my here is that we would be going to seven dollars, 'cause six, sixty percent is six dollars and sixty, I mean, sorry, ten percent, is six dollars and sixty cents. That one, I rounded just to sixty, just to make it easy for people.
I just think it should be higher than ten percent.
Okay.
That's, but I, 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 you know, I just think.
Well, I said ten percent rounded to the, rounded up, not rounded to the nearest dollar, rounded up.
I thought you did round up.
No, he rounded to the nearest.
This one here is rounded to, to fifty cent, but that, that could go to seven, it would go to seven, rounded up.
So that's sort of, I kind of agree with you, but that's, that's why I sort of said rounded up.
I, I just heard what you just said, and I'm not sure, rounded to the nearest dollar, but
Okay, sorry.
That's, that's all right, either way, I mean, I can make that seven and
Yeah, yeah, that way it's just all rounded up, and that way, yeah, it is more than, it's ten percent plus. I think that's what I said.
I think it should be higher than ten percent plus, I think it should be fifteen or twenty percent. When you're talking, you know, and they get, they get more of a break if they buy a little pad, you know, like punch card.
Well, that's true.
You get a break by being in, but if you pay, if you pay one, one-time fee, it's like twenty percent maybe, or, you know, something more, because they're not paying, or we're not
Right now, they don't, they don't bother doing anything.
I know that, I know that. So, it's like, one, they absolutely should pay, and two, it should be more than ten percent, in my opinion. Does, do, does anyone else think a ten percent is a good amount to pay?
Well, ten percent rounded up, and I agree that it's twenty percent, twenty percent more for the initial one, one-time check-in.
Yeah, and then you, as you buy a, a pass for more time, then you get more of a break.
I mean, I, I think them paying double may be fair, however, I would hate to charge so much that we start losing, uh,
I agree, I, I absolutely agree, I don't want them to pay double, but that's why twenty percent is
And, and people have told me they're willing to pay more.
I think if, if staff, if staff felt that was a workable number, I would support a higher number. I mean, if they thought twenty, we'd still get people through the door.
Can you do the numbers for us and show us what twenty percent would be, or, you know?
From a, from a six dollar for, for an in-resident?
Yeah.
It'd be seven dollars and twenty cents without any rounding.
I mean, what I'm thinking is, you know, um, there's a, there's a really nice water park down there in, uh, Ritten, in district, I think it's four dollars for two hours, out-of-district's eighteen, I mean, so, so that's a little, that's a little silly. But, uh, it would be interesting to see what a workable number is.
Yeah, I agree.
I would, I would like the flexibility to round it to the nearest quarter, though, because it makes it easier to, for taking quarters instead of seven dollars and twenty cents.
No, I agree, but how about up, round up to the
Near the dollar.
Well, seven twenty would go to seven twenty-five, it's close to this pass twelve and a half, so, so
Does anyone have a problem with
No, it seems fair enough, as long as they think that would work.
Yeah, I think that, I think the voters would like that better, too, 'cause I've had people complain to me, voters saying, they said, wait a second, why are, we built the pool and we're paying the taxes, and they kept coming using
When I go to a hospital, that I pay taxes in their district, it makes me mad that I pay all those taxes and somebody from California gets the same rate I do, so the voters may very much like it, yeah.
So, if I, before I move into, so, across the board, we're going twenty percent rounded to the nearest quarter.
Rounded up?
Well, if it comes in at seven dollars and five cents, do you want me to round up to seven?
Yes, I do.
Okay, twenty percent rounded up, okay. That's easy.
Do you believe it's still a workable number, cash?
Seven twenty-five, yeah, I, I mean, we'll find it, like anything else, anytime you raise the price, you're gonna get it, and then pretty soon, you know, it's gonna come back.
Because they have no other choice, so they're gonna come back.
We did that with swim school two years ago, when we did swim school, it went down for a couple sessions, and then
Yes.
private lessons, I thought we would just get raked over the coals, we'd do better on private lessons against our number.
And they raised money at the movie theater, the Bowlin Alley, it worked the same way, people pay off, it's gone, and then they start coming back.
Then, then what I'll do when I finish this, or when we get done tonight, I, um, I will redo this and send it out to everyone with the right numbers. And then, would this be a, an add-on to the November regular meeting as a, or do you wanna make a motion that it's approved?
No, let's, let's have us look at it again, and we'll, we'll, um, let's, let's add it to the agenda for the November meeting to review and, in its entirety, and
And then approve.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that as well.
All right, all right, next, um, on there are punch cards. So all the punch card, I mean, the, the numbers will change in here.
I think we're, weren't you getting rid of some of these, or?
Yes, I'm coming back, I'm coming back. For the punch cards, we took, except for senior youth, punch cards across the board were based on, excuse me, a fifty, a fifty cent discount off the regular price, so after over ten cards, you know, you're saving about five bucks for, you know, you're gonna pay ten dollars to come do something, a dollar each time, and now you're paying five bucks. And that's kinda what we did for punch cards, except for the senior, which is sixty years or older, that's due for me.
No way.
And seven to seventeen is the youth. All right, passes, so, so, and I, so for the punch cards, if they're, I'll, I'll adjust the numbers for the twenty percent rounded up to the out-of-district, but was there any, any, any questions or thoughts, discussion on that? Okay. Again, though, again, those punch cards won't take effect until the MWR, because we don't wanna have one group of people
Oh, so it won't, it won't take effect till October of two thousand and eighteen?
Until, until, oh, October eighteenth, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just those, those are the only two activities, we lap swimmers. They're the only things that MWR covers.
Twenty percent would push it to forty-eight, right, on the punch card?
I, I, off the top of my head, which one, um, punch, which one?
For the open swim, for instance?
Uh, okay, what's open swim and students, out, out-of-district, yeah, probably move it up to forty-eight.
Yeah, I was, I was just wondering there, if fifty would have been easier for everybody?
So what'll happen is retirees will, will no longer get funded by, by anything for, 'cause that's what happened in Fidel.
Oh, for military, yeah, they might, they might just say they'll end up paying a buck or fifty cents or whatever, yeah.
No, they, they, they won't pay anything.
I just wondered if for open swim, if, if, if it's forty in district, I just wondered if fifty out-of-district might be an easier number?
Well, I, well, to back to what you said earlier, forty-eight's a little more palatable to me than fifty, if someone, someone says it's forty-eight bucks, it's better.
Forty-nine, nine, nine, better.
Two numbers, two numbers difference, but, and we haven't even gotten to the, we haven't even gotten to the credit card thing yet, which is gonna jack everything. And that'll jack everything, just, so I'll cut to the chase on that, it'll jack everything five percent, because whatever we do, depending on how we, if we wanna do cash, I'll cut to that, but just think five percent more on top of whatever else is on here if we go to a credit card recovery office or something. Okay, passes, so we looked at other pools out there, and, um, our recommendation here is no annual or semi-annual passes, except for open swim. Wait. Passes.
Okay, you're right. They only have 30.
Yeah, I don't have... Sorry. My notes are... Okay, we weren't doing passes for lap and open swim.
No, I think they are part of it.
Okay, okay, good. All right. So... Oh, that's... I know what my notes said. Our passes would only be for... Would be... We would recommend quarterly, I'll come to the reason in a minute, only for lap swim and open swim. Now I understand how I wrote this. And then, but aerobics, we would move to punch cards. Yes?
Yeah, so again, going back to quarters, but they only have, I can notice, they only have 10 visit punch cards and 30-day passes, and that's it.
They have 30, yes. They have 30 days.
That's the only two they have.
I would rather go quarterly because it gives people a little bit more of a break.
Okay.
And most of our passes are quarterly right now that we have out. And I think it keeps the price a little more affordable than what we'd have to raise for an annual pass for a lot of people. They can come in and buy four quarterly passes. We can adjust each one with the expiration date. That's not a problem for it. And there's also less risk to them. So if a patron buys a quarterly pass, and then all of a sudden there's an injury, illness, and they go on vacation, they think, "Well, okay, so I'm not losing all this other money." You know, someone will go away for six months, four months, six months out of the year.
So just that, I'm going back to that, you know? You said the county cuts them a check.
Right.
Does the county charge us for cutting them a check?
Cut who a check?
Every time they... Every time we cut a refund check, does that cost us money?
No, other than the fee that we pay them to manage our money.
Okay, good, thank you.
So anyway, and then for us, for the district, we don't set ourselves up like you see in the paper. Well, right now, we've got about 51 grand in passes out there that could come back. So having them quarterly helps us manage that potential...
Debacle?
Yeah, there you go. That's a good word for it. So it helps us manage it better that way.
But again, if they've used part of it, let's say if they buy a quarterly pass, and they come back and say, "The last two months, so I'm gonna have to leave," kind of get my...
Well, there'd be... That's about being that refund policy. And then, but there, you know, for me, there's things you just can't cover everything in there.
I know, yeah, I know.
So that's why I have the...
But again, we sort of need to cover our expenses, too.
Right, right. But there's really, there's no expense to us, other than we... The treatment is to fill out a form. I approve it, and I can either waive the fee or not waive the fee, depending on what the situation is. Or approve or disapprove the refund request in that case. So any thoughts on passes? I mean, is that...
No, I like it. I think we're good. Does anyone feel the annual passes? So you like that apparently?
Okay. And with that in mind, if what the approval board, then annual, I will not sell any more annual semi-annual passes going forward. We've already suspended it now, anyway. The only thing we'll sell, and actually, we haven't sold anything, any passes, until we know on November 7th or 8th. But after that, we'll only pick up quarterly passes. All right, swim family discount, you see down there near the bottom of page 2 of that. It was $10, but we want to move it up to $15 for a family of four, and then $3 for each additional.
Says up to five.
Pardon?
Up to five.
On the far right.
Uh, 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 yeah. No, it's up to four.
Mine says up to five. Family swim discount, up to five.
So it says up to four, yeah, that would...
Mine says up to four.
It said they used to be up to five, on the far right, it says up to four.
Oh, yeah, 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 over here.
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Okay, got it.
Oh, that's right, that was the prior one.
I'm looking at my notes, not the current. Okay, swim school. Basically, swim school, our proposal is to raise it $1 a class, which there are eight classes in a session, and then a $3 per class increase on the private lessons. That moves it from 22 to 25.
I feel like that's fair.
Again, just out of district, make sure you...
20% rounded up.
Yeah.
So I sat with Pete, the kayak dude, and we went through all of this and redid the numbers based on his, all the things there. So these prices are actually more in line with what goes on in Seattle area, or a little bit less, and we should probably be a little bit less around Seattle. We don't have to be like that. But it's in line with that in column 2 there, and I think it's... And these prices in here are for two or more people. If someone wants to come in and do it as single, then basically a double. The price is based on two or more people. If Commissioner Hoffmeyer wanted to come in and, "Hey, I want to do a roll clinic with you," well, then instead of paying $66, he'd pay $130. But that would be, they would have to call us.
And anything that uses the pool, I would still say you should have an in and out of district rate.
Do you want to... Okay, all right.
Does everyone else agree on, you know...
Good point.
Except for San Favela, right? Because there...
Yes, there... That's a different thing.
Okay.
But, yeah, but for, you know, if people just come in to do it, that there should be an in and out of district.
Okay.
Or there should be an out of district price if it uses the pool.
Yeah, I agree.
If it's just Pete going out to the beach with those guys, although they're using our assets, but they're not using the pool, I'm kind of like...
But they still are using our assets.
They is. The kayaks, we pay them.
We pay the kayaks.
Okay. Other than San Favela College, I assume, you know, that was all figured in somebody's mind at some time about, you know, the district.
It was.
Yes, this stuff. There we go.
Okay, so then the last thing, last thing on there is group rentals. I guess I'll go to in and out of district for that, so I'll add that to there. And that's, those were just nominal... They're actually, those prices were actually good, still pretty good. They were right at the edge on one of them, but still profitable. And so it's basically just sort of a nominal cost of living increase on those. But I mean, I'll do the out of district there.
These prices are basically, you said, are profitable. Profitable based on, you know, our minimum wage is going up and up.
Yes.
So it may not be profitable in a couple years.
Pardon?
May not be profitable in a couple years.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right now, it is.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And the next part of this was the credit card fee. So actually, let me close out this part of it, and then we can... I will go back here, and I will take all of the out of district stuff. I will add 20% rounded up to the next quarter, and then I will put in, I'll fix all the words, fours to fives. Actually, basically, what you'll get is you'll get a sheet that's only the proposed current thing, unless you want to see the original one still.
Yeah, it's always good to see that, too.
How about I get rid of if the levy fails column for now?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll cross that column out, and then I will add out of district rates for kayak and pool rental as well.
Thank you.
All right, okay. And then the second part of that discussion on the agenda was the credit card fee discussion. We talked about it, and lots of staff, and our field is, we just make one price for everything, like most places out there do. That's our recommendation, which would mean I would raise everything 5%. And so that covers the broad variety of, one credit card might only be at 1.75, and another one's 3.8%. So we cover the broad range of transaction fees that credit card banks charge us on that. So that's the staff recommendation for...
What's the percentage, if you know, of people that paid with cash or check versus credit cards?
We actually have a rough number on that. It's depending on the time of year, but if you average it, it's about 65 to 70% credit card. I mean, it might be less sometimes in the year, but on average, it's about 65, 70%.
What do you guys think? As we had talked last time, when we sort of were talking about, we're talking about giving a break to people who do use cash. So you have a set price and then give them a break, like you do at the dentist's office. Or should we just say, "No, you know what? It's just a cost of doing business, and we're gonna raise everything an extra 5%."
I think if that's what they want to do, and that's what they consider easiest, then let's go that way.
I mean, I think some of us are probably of different generations, and that might be part of it. I don't think I've paid for anything cash in like 15 years, so I mean, I think it's just a cost of doing business. I'd like to see it built in, but...
I like the... I agree. That's sweet, you prosper.
I like it, too, so do that.
Are you just also...
No, not necessarily. I just said I haven't used cash in a long time.
No, I think he's a different generation. That was the exact order he was... He didn't say...
I don't consider...
I was in a gas station in Spokane, they don't think I have.
You were the one who said you were about to turn 60.
They get robbed.
Well, I bet you that...
All right, so I'll just add, I'll add, you'll see it in the, in this right here, you'll see 5% added on top to everyone else.
Okay. Are we done with this discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. New business, the refund policy.
So, sorry, you have to hit the one for me. I sent it out way back earlier.
Yeah, I read it. I remember seeing it, yeah.
Now I got one more. So you have my chicken scratch on yours where Julie and I sat and looked through it. In essence, I think what I can do is I can rewrite... So my proposal's gonna be to redraft this for the board for approval next, at the regular meeting in November. But one of the things that we... Five, what you don't see in here, private pool rental party refund, there's no $5 admin fee. In practice, actually, in practice, that's all the refund form. So we need to just make it in there work. Everything, unless waived by the executive director, there's a $5 administrative fee for refund policy.
Oh, well...
It's not written in that paragraph, so you can see it's in my chicken scratch.
But is the line, the 100% refund credit will be made when activity is canceled by the Northwood Park Recreation District?
Yeah.
That's still will be that way, well? They won't have to get the approval for the $5. I thought that thing...
No, 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 no. So like if we have a ground out in the pool, and we close it, or a trailer fails or something...
So the one that Commissioner Singleton brought up, should, basically, should have gotten a full refund?
Right.
With that, based on even us policy?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a way to cover every single thing that's going wrong in here on this right here. But that's the first thing that we said. All monetary refunds come in the form of a check from county. That's just the way it is. At my discretion, I can waive any cancellation penalties or fees again, based on what the situation is. Swim school, it talks about going through, prior to the first lesson, but we want to make that, they can receive it through the first lesson, because what happens sometimes in there is a kid comes in, and he's in there, and they just freak out, they can't do it. You see that line about once every other lesson, where you get a kid in there that just, they don't, you can't calm them down. And, or they come in, and they're in the wrong, the parents signed up for the wrong level, but there's not, the right level isn't there. There weren't enough for the right level. So we'd like to make that through the first lesson instead of prior to the first lesson, because it gives us the flexibility to go, "Yeah, you're right. This is not really your fault, even though it wasn't anything we did in there." On that, on the swimming school refund, so the second paragraph there was the swimming school refund credit transfer. That last sentence would be deleted? If, oh, wait, I'm sorry, you come back up here before I get to that one. I should stick my notes and stuff like this.
Hey, Kaz?
Yes, sir.
So on what you just said, would it, should you include something that defines why, just so you don't have a mastectomy for some other reason? Like if it was for legitimate reason that you said through the first lesson?
I could give a non-legal example in there. Typically, it's someone gets sick, there's a death in the family. Those are the kind of, you know, a kid, especially this time of year, when the kids are just back in school, a little walk in Petri dishes. You know, my kid's sick, and it's two days prior to their open swim or private party. No one wants to come in here and have a kid do that.
Come back Saturday.
Why, it says the maximum amount of credits given for specials is half the amount paid for the class enrollment. Why?
Well, so that's where I was coming to. We want to just get rid of that, because what that, with me having the ability to waive anything, anyway, we just want that line there.
It doesn't seem fair anywhere, right?
Right. And then the last sentence in that paragraph, in the event of a transfer to an athletic team, we don't have an athletic team here anymore, so there's really no reason to transfer anything.
Okay.
Then the, we should probably put in here a military clause that states that if someone has an official set of orders to go somewhere, like for a pass, or, "Hey, we scheduled this party three months out, but we're out of here now in six weeks," or something. Now, that's kind of extreme, almost unrealistic, or maybe not. But something in there, if they have an official reason why they can't do it because of a transfer or deployment or something, then I think that should be in there for the military.
Probably legally required, too. Probably legally required in most businesses. Isn't it probably legally required?
I don't know that.
They add in jury duty?
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, that's a good one, too.
The normal kind of stuff that shows up.
KDA, official orders, jury duty. Okay. And then that whole last paragraph, since we don't have, I made the thing in there about, to executive director, but the last one on there, there is no athletic team, so there's really no reason for that paragraph to be in there. So with the board's permission, I'll redraft this, I'll send it out to you guys, well, and probably within the next, by early, mid next week. and, I mean, probably within the next, quite early, mid next week, and, uh, then we'll add it to the agenda for, for resolution. Yeah, it is our, so it'll become resolution seventeen something.
Okay. Anyone have anything else on this?
No, you know, where, where we were talking about the official orders, um, jury duty, I, I wonder if it wouldn't be fair to just throw et cetera in there? I know he has the right to waive anything, anyway, but there are a lot of things we may miss.
Put in, put in the clause, or as the executive director sees fit to...
Right, yeah, I sort of had that in there, I sort of had that, at his discretion, maybe we need a little...
There we go, okay. Executive Director goals. I didn't get anything from anybody, was I supposed to have?
And they both said anything to me.
I think you were supposed to be, I didn't, my, my...
Alright, so, for November, everyone, you need to bring with you your list, bring two to three executive director goals for next year, that he's supposed to be working on now, and we will have the chairman, whoever that is, put them together, and come up with a nice list, alright? So don't forget this time. I looked at it, said, wait a minute, what was left?
I, I don't intend to bring anything, because I'm not going to be here.
I agree. But we would appreciate your input, 'cause you've been on the board for almost two years. Can you do that for us?
I mean, I might be go, I might be going, too, I don't know, see, I have things that we'd like to see, I guess, you know?
Yes, that's, all I'm asking is, use your two years of experience, what do you think the director, and I imagine there's gonna be some repeat in them, just like there were the last time.
Something the new people can spread off of, I suppose.
They, 'cause they're, they're gonna come in, and they're not gonna know, so we need to give them the benefit of our experience, please. Alright. Uh, we need a budget review, 'cause the budget has to be in the thirtieth of November, so sometime between now and probably prior to our meeting, that's Thanksgiving week, we should have a meeting just to go over the budget. So, everyone read their calendars?
Can I go?
I have, I have two proposed dates.
Okay, hang on, let me get my calendar out. Okay, proposed dates are...
In, in, in order would be Monday, November thirteenth, and then comes, that's the only one prior, the next one would be the night after, the twenty-second, because, um, I need my, I need, I need Joanne here for this, and she's gone from the fourteenth through the twenty-first.
Okay, um, does the thirteenth, Monday, the thirteenth work for everybody?
Better than the other, yes.
Six-thirty, and whenever you guys decide.
Do you wanna do it earlier?
No, six-thirty is the...
Do you wanna do it seven?
The holiday, I mean, seven.
Budget meetings actually don't go that long, as you think.
How long is it?
So, any time after six-thirty is five a time.
Okay, so, six-thirty on the thirteenth.
Okay. Alright. And I'll, I'll do my best to empty as, as quickly as the, the draft, but my goal will be no later than the Thursday prior to the ninth, to get the, to get, get the, um, yes.
Yes, so, would we have anything from the county as to how much we're gonna get from the levy?
I, I actually have an idea.
Oh, you do? How much?
Because this first two years, well, based on what they think, now, we won't know actually until December thirty-first, or that's when everything gets done, but right now, it's looking, if, if the number doesn't change much, it's looking as, um, hang on, I need to write this before I, before I do that attachment, uh, it's looking at about six-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars. What, in the budget, I've been working for the last couple of weeks off and on, on, I've only put in six-hundred-and-forty-five, but the first, the first year of a new levy, you get your seventeen cents, it's the, it's the out years, after that, those pools, and the one percent, and those things like that, so you get it. But based on the valuations, they're estimating about a ten percent, um, valuation in properties.
Yeah, that's what they told me, was seven to ten percent, yeah, she asked, she thought it wouldn't be up at a ten percent, but I guess...
I will put that, now, there's that one form that we put in there, where we want, I'll put a really right number in there, so just in case it goes above what we really think it's gonna be, we can still get, but that's that same form, it's the levy certification form. Okay, I got that for the eighteen-thirty on Monday, the thirteenth, and we'll get the others.
Okay, uh, next, we need to elect a new chair, and it's not as easy as just making Wendy do it, 'cause she's the vice chair, you actually have to elect a new one, and Wendy, I asked her when she told me she was sick today, and she said she does not want the job.
I propose Commissioner, I'll fire her.
I say...
No, you're...
No, no, because I was involved in what went on, I don't think, I don't like the optics of that.
Well, I, but, you're the only...
I don't like the optics of that.
What are the optics?
I mean, that, that it arose from a conflict between you and I, and I don't, I don't like that, because that was not the goal in any way.
I, I would, I would not think that you would want this job, quite frankly, but it's, no, I don't think that optic is at all there, that you did it just to get this job, nobody wants this job. So if that's, I don't think that's the optic, so please don't turn it down for that reason.
Okay, well, 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 given your blessing, if you will, then I will, I will accept that, so, for, for the interim.
I second that.
So it's moved in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'm in abstain for the optic reasons, but it's like, okay, Mr. Chair, as of the end of this meeting. Alright, uh, staff reports, anyone got any questions? Just, if you have them, speak out. Oh, the Laundry Angels, I think it's an awesome program, but where are we gonna store the towels, and how many, do we know how many there are?
We got them, we got them dropped off today, and we're gonna store them probably behind the counter somewhere, be, back around outside, but by the first aid stuff.
But then, the people who check in for shower, we need...
Yeah, they come in, we hand them a wash rag and a thing, and then they give it to us, and we throw it into one of those mesh bags, and they come twice, and we can pick those up and drop off clean.
I think that's great, 'cause it saves one paper, can't believe it happened again.
And, and actually, we're getting, they're giving me a write-up that we can put on our Facebook page, and, um, just reminded me, I, I, I need to go answer an email, uh, a reporter from the newspaper wanted to do a, a little work on it, so...
Is there collateral that they have to give for it?
They, they provide a ticket to us. Uh, well, they provide a ti, um, no, they, I asked them if they wanted, you know, like, if you wanna get a locker key, you have to get like a key card or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Pop in a monkey.
So they can, they can lock out with the towels, they're on our channel.
They factor product loss into what they're...
Sounds like a great program, though, so, very excited.
Yes, very.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
When will that start, then, 'cause I'm looking...
It's, it's starting today.
Great, thank you.
Oh, wait, we're still in staff report, right?
Staff report, yes.
I don't have that right to say.
Anybody else? Employee of the month is Kirsten Pollock. Kirsten is highly disciplined staff member working across multiple departments as a lifeguard, student instructor, and client service specialist. In each role, she seeks out new challenges and embraces every opportunity to learn new skills and take on increased responsibility. Kirsten is extremely conscientious and goes out of her way to make sure patron needs are being met at the highest level. She enters all of this and maintains a high academic GPA in high school. Her welcoming demeanor and friendly personality can't be missed, can't be missed. Um, thank you for all you do, Kirsten. Alright. Okay, final board comments?
Yeah, um, so, so, so we voted to, uh, we voted to begin the shutdown procedure of the levy fails. You know, what, what I have to add to that is if, 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 if the yes crowd turns out